Hello, Nancy. So other people are having trouble logging in to that.
They were.
Well, it makes me feel a little bit better that I'm not the only one with technically with technology problems for the day, but you know, it can happen.
It can happen. We're all here. We're good.
We're good. I think we have a minute to go. How are we doing on? I mean, I know you sent an email out that we didn't have a forum, but now we do.
Right. I'm waiting for Carl hasn't made it over yet. Noel and Colin.
Yeah, we'll wait a minute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's Colin.
I thought my air conditioner was out and I have spent. If anybody thinks they need to get a new air conditioner or new and or new furnace, call me because I've been living that wonderland down that rabbit hole for the last few days. So big, big learning curve. So just give me a call. I can tell you how to shortcut it. And ended up with $600 free on charge instead of $17,000 of equipment. So there you go.
Who is the company that gave you the right info? I would like to know.
It's a very small company called Nordic, N O R D I C. That's his name's Mark. And I involved Bill Smith, Sanders and Johnson, another, another, I can't even remember. Action, action or something. I don't know, something like that. So yeah, as a real estate agent, it's helpful for you to know. Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people out there that'll just tell you, oh, you gotta replace everything. You gotta replace everything.
Well, and I'm happy to replace everything within the next two years because of all the restrictions that are coming down the pipe. But that's another topic. But I did, well, my friend that's a real estate agent asked for her recommendation and her recommendation didn't come back for two days. So I'm just like, you're gone. So.
Yep. Chair Austin, everyone is here that's going to be here, I believe.
Thank you for getting me back on track. I appreciate that very much. So hearing such, I am calling the planning and zoning meeting of May 17th to order. And we need to take a rule to establish a forum, don't we?
We do. Kate Townley is absent and McDonaldson is absent. Colin Hagerty.
Here.
Judy Brown.
Here.
Kate Fuller.
Here.
Noel Atkins.
Here.
Carl Adams.
Here.
Brenda Hubka.
Here.
And Chair Austin.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Perfect. Nancy, I thought I had like printout of the agenda in front of me, but I'm going to have to print another one out. So what is the next item on the agenda, please?
Through 11 minutes.
Okay. All right. Do I hear your motion to approve the minutes?
I will move to approve.
I think May 3rd, something like that, right? Yeah, May 3rd. Yeah. Thank you. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none. We need to vote to approve the minutes.
We do. Colin.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
All right. Brenda.
Yes.
And Chair Austin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. It appears that my next item, I need to do it. I need to do I need a motion to open the public hearing?
We're not having a public hearing. It's a study session.
Okay.
It would be public. Public forum, but I do not see any. That's okay. But I do not see anyone on from the public. So we can head into the study session if you'd like.
Okay. Sounds like a great idea. Am I to call on whom? Brad, whoever from staff about the capital improvements plan?
Chair, it's a continuation of our last meeting. We have three of the directors on that the commissioners had requested to answer any questions. I can pull up the plan that we list that we had from last, last meeting. And this is where we left off.
Okay. And since all of those members were, they were sworn in before, we don't have to swear them in again. Is that correct?
Not a public, it's not a public hearing chair. It's a study session. So there's no swearing in.
Perfect.
Okay. Can everyone see the spreadsheet? Is that big enough?
Yes. I guess, do we want to start with the questions? It looked like Brian might have been going into maybe starting to talk.
Yeah, I gave a whole introduction on mute, so I'm sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. I was wondering, Brian. Thank you.
I really don't have anything to add other than let's, I think it'd be best just to start with the questions that you all had. That we either kind of farmed out to the different directors or they're here to kind of answer any of those questions and then we can go from there.
I guess, Nancy, do you have that list of questions? I forgot if that was included in the information that was sent out.
It was. If you give me a moment, I can pull it up.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay. Can you see those questions?
I see your Windows Explorer showing the questions highlighted.
Yeah.
It's not open.
It's okay. Sorry, folks. Okay, what about now?
Perfect.
Thank you.
So Brian, did you want to start with going through the list of these questions?
Again, I think the first one that you all had a question about where, where it was to identify the projects that were shovel ready. Or had received funding from previous years. How are those dollars spent from previous years? Do you want me to just read through all of them? Or how would you like me to proceed, Chair?
No, that's fine with me. And if any of the commissioners have any questions and want to stop him from going forward, just raise your hand. Sounds good.
I'd say why don't we go through one at a time, the questions, so we know how we're assessing each one of those, I think would be good.
Okay, we'll do that. It's fine.
So yes, Brian, I know you're coming in new, so probably gonna need some assistance on which projects receive funding from the previous year. And you know, which one were kind of shovel ready that we would need to continue spending that money. And then I guess some of those is how was that money spent? Was it all spent? Things like that.
Would you like, sorry.
I was gonna say if any of the directors are able to answer or respond. Please.
Sorry, sorry, Brian.
Can respond on behalf of Parks and Recreation, our projects that we've got in my departments. I don't see Maria DeAndrea on here, so she's got the majority, but the ERC upgrades that are under the public improvement funds, we have additional $200,000 in there. This project is ready to go and it should kick off actually the beginning of 2023 and probably lasts until mid-year, if not the fall. And this is a, this has been, this is fairly new. We have had ERC upgrades for the recreation center as part of a capital improvement project for many years now, kind of building the funds up. And the goal is to fully implement the project and complete it within next year.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that information. But before we go forward, can you identify on our spreadsheet? Sounds like you're okay with us reducing it by 200,000. I just don't want to misunderstand what you're saying.
No, that one, the request is for additional 200,000, which is needed based off of the bids that we're looking at for the improvements. As you know, costs are going up unfortunately. And so the project is costing more than initially budgeted for probably five years ago.
Great.
And it looks like we've got one more under tier one, which is the, under the Fund 30 for public improvement for Parks and Rec, which is the parking lot maintenance piece. That one, unfortunately, we just got bids in for a parking lot in Inglewood Recreation Center and Valley Recreation Center as well. And the bids came in at $99,000 to do those two lots, which is unheard of. We've not received such high bids in forever. And so we may do some basic maintenance on those and roll those projects to next year. So we bank the 60,000 and roll it to the 60,000 we have in 2022 and roll it to 2023 in order to complete those lots fully.
Well, that's because oils hit almost $115 a barrel. So that's, that's where that price increase has come from. I think Colin has his hand up.
I was just gonna note that I just got hit on a project for about a 25% increase on asphalt costs. And they said that they were hoping that that was going to be it. So it was even just a couple of months ago, they thought it was going to be okay, but not right now.
Even a couple of months ago, oil was under 100. So, but it's 115 now, so.
So depending on cost, you see 2023 is 60,000. It very well could be rolled again, depending on how things go. The hope is we stay steady or drop in, in cost and time here, so.
And I think for something like that, it's good to know that you might consider holding off on that because we don't have enough money to go through. So that 60,000 might be a good one to kind of pull off to the side. So thank you for that clarification.
You got it.
And I think you said you're not sure if Director DeAndre was on. I think a couple of the questions that have to do with the generic bridge repairs and street reconstruction that had 300, 500, which are about the same as last year, you know, what kind of spending was, was done for those and those kinds of things. I'm not sure if you have any insight on that.
I do not.
Sorry, if I could jump in, I just heard from Director DeAndre. She got kicked out of the meeting. She's trying to get back on now. So and we also have Jeremy from IT to answer any questions on, on the meeting too. Thanks.
I can answer a couple of things. This would probably answer one and kind of two. One of the major projects is the fiber projects that we should probably discuss a little bit. We completed a fiber design for the city. So basically it's the core network. It's the core network and we thought about, what is it going to look like 30 to 50 years out? And what could we be faced? Could we be faced with municipal ISPs? How, what's autonomous vehicles looking like? What's smart cities going to be looking like? So we really designed this, this fiber project to meet those needs and get the core city, the core city done, along with trying to get all of our current assets connected up. So parks, getting all the parks, their irrigations. So there might be security cameras that we need to set up. There might be Wi-Fi access that we want to put in the parks. Or and then our traffic signals, getting our traffic signals online, our SCADA for water and wastewater, our sewer. So being able to, and all of our city buildings. So the whole design encompassed all of that. And unfortunately, when we got done, the total, we wanted to really find out what were we up against and how do we prioritize this? Because it does cost a lot of money to put in the ground, this fiber in the ground. So the total cost of the project estimated around 20, $20 million for the full on project. So you know, if we put a million dollars in per year, it's going to take us 20, 20 years to get the city covered and get our buildings covered. But you know, I know that's not realistic. So you know, and what is that going to do to the other projects? Well, I would say if we, if we took money away from the project, it just delays and we just have to figure out, find creative ways. And also try to find other fundings because those are other things that we're trying to look for as well. So if you guys have any questions on that, I'm here to answer those.
I see a couple of hands up. So go ahead, Nancy.
That's okay. Colin and then Noel.
No, I'm sure Noel will have some more intelligent questions being in the field, but isn't some of the stimulus money, funding money for fiber networks, would the city qualify for any of that type of money to, I don't know if that's broadband only, if that actually would include fiber, if any, anything has been investigated on that front.
Yeah, unfortunately, like the ARPA bonds and the and the new infrastructure, they have broadband money for federal funding set aside. And basically what the federal government has done is said that money is basically reserved for the unserved or underserved. And basically that means if there's more, if you have in your area an ISP that can provide, I believe to the federal government is above 25 megabits per second, then we are served. So basically we don't qualify for any of those funding, the, that funding. There is other things that we can look at too, for like the infrastructure saying since all departments, Parks and Rec, utilities, the city, we worked all together for this, there might be other opportunities to work with public works or utilities with some of this infrastructure grants to say, well, as they're upgrading some of their systems or like utilities, they need to upgrade security at their sites and they need to get fiber there. Well, our design's done. It's shovel ready. So that, that was a whole goal is to get a design done because a lot of these grants, they want it to be shovel ready. So we can just give them the things, say, I need this done. So we're prepared in that. So as they come up and those opportunities come up, we're prepared to submit for grants to try to get that stuff done. But I'm also trying to prepare and try to secure funding down the road to start you know, constructing this, this fiber network. We're not going to be able to get it done in five years because of funding. Did that answer your question, Colin?
Yes, yes, thank you. I appreciate.
Okay.
Noel.
Are there milestones or gates for this deployment that you can share where, you know, if we can put in 3 million, we're going to be able to do XYZ and that's kind of the main, or that's the push first thing?
As we speak right now, no, we don't have those milestones and those priorities set right now. We are beginning to work on those priorities because we do have some funding for this year to put some stuff down. We have, we have roughly a million dollars to start the construction of the project. I know my priorities is to at least get to the police department and the rec center because we are paying for Comcast, the franchise agreement ended. We no longer get to use their fiber for free. So now we have to start paying for it. So those, some of our buildings is actually trying to get there is a priority. But I really want to work with the departments to come up with a plan and get those milestones down. So we can budget a little bit easier on that.
Right, yeah. And with those, I was, you kind of touched on my next question is, you know, what are we paying to outside vendors? And how does that reduce as X number of dollars get put into the, into the fiber project? Or like I said, this in the last call, you know, anything on this list where we can spend money that makes money? You know, like is worth identifying or spend money to save money is worth identifying.
Well, unfortunately, putting fiber and having your own fiber in the ground costs money and you're really not going to recoup a lot of costs by you're not going to recoup a lot of costs by removing your additional costs. It's still going to take a long time to recover some costs of what we're currently paying for bandwidth. But the issues are, let's say we wanted to do a municipal ISP, we would have to have our own infrastructure to do that. We would not be able to use with the contracts that infrastructure to provide internet service to homes, gigabit internet to the home. So we wouldn't be able to do that kind of a commercial service over leased lines. We would have to have our own fiber in the ground. It, it, it is quite an expense, but we got to prioritize it.
So trying to bring this back to what we're trying to decide and work towards, if I, if I'm looking at the spreadsheet correctly, I think you asked for a million and at our current thought process is half of that. What does that mean to your, thank you, Nancy, for bringing that up.
Yeah, there was a million there.
Next year.
Yeah, there was a million in there. I do, I did expect, I mean, for it to be cut pretty, pretty good because, you know, we only got one pot, one pot to share amongst everybody. It will just, you know, delay the project. I mean, I shouldn't say delay. It just add more time to the project to be completed. You know, that, that's really all it is. It's time, time that that would do that. In, you know, 500 would get us somewhere. I mean, one of the issues in 2019, the state of Colorado initiated a bill that that they have to do subsurface utility and engineering on all the designs for permitting and stuff. And that has increased our cost for deploying fiber significantly because of the engineering time that it takes. So every crossing, they have to, the city requires for the permit a class, or I believe it's a class A, so that, which that means is they have to pothole and physically find the depth of each crossing of the utilities there and put them on, on on the plans in order to issue the permit. So.
And have it stamped.
And have it stamped, yes.
Which is a whole nother.
Right. Right. So it, you know, and so that just increased the cost. It basically doubled or tripled the cost, you know, per mile on on a lot of that stuff. So the reality is if you cut it in half, I mean, it's it's only timing. But you know, there's other, I mean, within twenty years, we want to finish this project. I'm sure there's you know, other opportunities that will arise with other grant funding opportunities. So it's not like a diehard that we have to have a million. But it also depends on what everybody's priorities are when when it comes to smart cities and, you know, I don't know what council would want to be and what the city needs to provide for the citizens. So you know, and that's really where it's going to come down to.
Well, that's helpful. Thank you very much. Want to ask a quick question of staff. What is the anticipated outcome for tonight's meeting? Are we supposed to have all of our recommendations voted upon to forward to City Council or help me out here?
If I could answer that, yes, we have to have an agreement tonight of your list of recommendations so we can forward those on to the city manager. Because you will not have a meeting again unless you want to meet next week. We would not have another meeting before that memo is due to the city manager.
Okay. So I just want to be mindful of our time and where we're trying to go. Are there any other folks from staff that can answer, I think, any of the questions on that list before? If not, how much money do we have to spend and how much have we recommended already? And let's just go through and figure this out.
Christine may be able to, or Director Underhill, excuse me, might be able to answer. They had a question, would Security Civic and Rec Center project be similar to the library door project?
Those are two separate projects. So the library request to do the feasibility study for changing how the entrance exit points are, as well as adding those new doorways in for safety reasons was actually brought forth from the library board itself. It's per the charter, they're supposed to be recommending different capital projects. And this, I think, might be the first year in a long while that they've done that. And so those are the two that they came up with for twenty twenty-three to implement. So it's different than the overall facility project for the security and the rec center. So unfortunately, I think Director Deandre could answer that piece of it as it falls in her purview.
And unfortunately, I just heard from Director Deandrea and her internet is not working. So it doesn't, doesn't seem that she's going to be able to make it anytime soon.
Okay.
That makes it easy. That means IT and Parks and Rec get all the money, right?
Hey, I'm good with that.
Opportunist, which is not a bad thing sometimes.
Nancy, would you mind bringing the questions back up? I know, I apologize. I know you have to keep switching back. Maybe I'll even take a screenshot of them so I can have them and be looking at them same time. Just want to make sure we cover the questions and then we can go through and just start, like Michelle was saying, to start cutting or funding. Because I think we've only got eight hundred, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars left, at least is the numbers is that we have right now.
Can I quickly answer the flowerbed question, just to cut that one out? That one actually falls under the, I believe that's the open space fund. So that's not part of the prioritization that you all are doing. And that's the funding that Parks and Recreation receives from Arapahoe County. And it is viable to use that as a capital improvement project for beautification of our parks.
How about a couple ones down? Are road and bridge and bridge repair different?
And I think that was kind of the question, like those are just kind of lump ones that would be good to Director Deandre, just kind of say, what are we spending every year? I guess bridge repairs looks like tier one, street reconstruction is tier two. So I don't know, maybe that's where we draw the line, put the tier one in and not the tier two, although I hate to not have street repairs and things. I guess there's another, I think there's kind of multiple of the same, almost the same thing. So the street reconstruction, but then there's also I thought another one that was some sort of roadway improvements or something.
Yep. Bridge repairs requested three hundred thousand.
Oh, that's what it is. Arterial and Collector Street Pavement Maintenance is a tier three, but they're asking for a million on that one. I mean, I feel like those are a tier two and a tier three for street reconstruction and street or an arterial and collector street pavement maintenance. I've been not really identifying specific projects that we need. We had unlimited money, great, but I don't know that it's something that, you know, we're going to be able to implement if we're trying to make everything else go. Oh, and then there's also road and bridge on line eleven.
Well, no, you know, without more description or detail, it's hard to say, yeah, let's let's fund that because we really don't know what that means is, and it may be simply a big fund and then the staff will prioritize it. We don't know.
Forgive me for interrupting again. Colin, can you keep track of any numbers you guys agree on? I'm going to try to help Director Deandre to get on. So if you could keep track on the spreadsheet and I'll catch up with you. Could you do that for me, please?
I will. Yes, I will do my best here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for jumping in.
Yes, maybe we just start running down unless we want to go through, should we go through the questions at all anymore? I think we kind of covered. What was going on? I guess the only thing that was odd was the tier zero project. I think someone said that was answered, but I don't know if I saw. Was that just a mistake on the tiering? Was that you from you, Brian?
I think that's right. And I think Nancy got that one resolved at the last meeting. It wasn't supposed to be a tier zero. She had updated the tier in the spreadsheet.
And then Brenda, I think you had your hand up. Is that right?
Oh, yeah. I just thought we could let the actor Underhill go. But I just wanted to kind of clear up what we need for the library. I just know that they had security issues. And I want to, her opinion on what we can do in this budget to help retain employees. So that was kind of my question about security versus this study about the doors. Is that helpful at all with that, with considering closing one of the doors and doing that study?
One, the thought we had in the previous library manager and I had a good conversation as we were seeing more and more security issues pop up. You know, there's two entrance points. We have one security unarmed officer that's in the facility and they're constantly on a swirl, you know, trying to swivel, trying to see what's coming into the facility. So the thought was closing off the current main entrances that you have on the north and the south side of the building, you know, the one on the south goes to the parking garage. The north goes out to the circle out front as well as RTD light rail area. And so we were talking about maybe making one entrance, which would be located on the east side, which is between the twenty-four hour fitness building and the civic center and making that one entrance point. So you almost have to go through a checkpoint, pass the security officer enter into the library. And then those two existing points on the north and south side would become emergency exits only. And so that's what we kind of wanted to look at through that feasibility to set study to see if that really did make sense. And then the feasibility study would also give us a cost for doing that work if if it made sense to move forward. And so ultimately, if if you're looking to cut anything, it'd probably be adding the or changing the entrance exit points in twenty twenty-three and all we do is a feasibility study. And then in twenty twenty-four, the work would be implemented if that's the direction it goes. So it's not a lot of money, but it would be possibly one way to go is to postpone actually implementing the work till twenty twenty-four.
I think currently we did not fund the feasibility study. And I'm sorry, I'm looking at my other computer. I should probably just look over here. You probably got it here, Colin.
I'm back, Colin. Thank you so much. Yes.
I don't think I actually did anything, but you're welcome.
Okay, good. No, you have not put any money in the feasibility study yet.
Okay, and we didn't put, okay, sounds good. Okay.
And we have some people with Jeremy has a question or wants to make a comment and then Colin.
Yeah, I did. While we're on the topic of security, you know, I know security cameras on for IT, that's like the tier two, that's kind of teetering on a tier one to tier two. I mean, I just got out of a meeting today with the Parks and Rec Department and we have a lot of security concerns. I know it's not a whole lot, but it can get us further to address some of those security concerns of what they can see, what they can't see, and some of the crime that's happening at some of their facilities. So just something to consider. I just wanted to make a comment on that. And if we're thinking about moving the door in the library, we also got to think about security cameras as well because that area is not, it's covered, but not covered like they would want it to be covered.
Colin?
And maybe Jeremy, you could talk to the Security Civic Center and Rec Center versus Security Cameras IT versus those other ones. I guess where I'm also, I know it's a long way off for the redevelopment of the civic center, but I'm concerned about throwing, not throwing, but putting money into that. Safety wise, great, but like moving entrances and things like that, if that building is going to go away sometime. I mean, I know that's probably longer than I'd like it to be, but just, you know, we know it's coming at some point.
I don't know what the civic center security and rec center security is all about. I'm I haven't been a part of that. But I I have been a part of some concerns with staff on areas that they don't have visibility, like the Malle Center, their cameras are, they're they're running close up to ten years old and they can't identify things. Other other places like the rec center, phase two of upgrading their cameras, the upstairs is not covered that they need to be covered. We've got some stuff at Pirates Cove that needs to be done. So in in that, that money helps us upgrade some cameras and get some new places and and do that. And with these cameras can last quite a bit, quite quite a while, but with technology as the upgrade, it gets better and better and better. With the redevelopment, if it's under five years, we could possibly move some cameras from one building to another building. So there's, just depending on the age of those cameras. So there's a lot of possibilities of what we can do with security cameras. And the twenty K on the civic center stuff, I I don't know what that is.
If I could jump in again, I believe Director Deandre is on the call. Maria, can you hear you? Yay, good to have you.
Thank you. Sorry, my internet is not working. So
So Chair, that's okay. Chair, how would you like to proceed? We have two hands raised or do you want to go back to the questions?
Let's do the, I'm assuming that the two hands raised are pertinent to what was just said. So let's do that first.
Okay, Judy?
I just have, this is more of a logistics question. We're talking about security and safety and it seems like that's all very disjointed where, in my opinion, security cameras should not be a IT issue. It shouldn't be a rec center issue. I would think somewhere along the line, we have a public safety pool of funds. And I understand that that's not part of what we're doing here today. But I would certainly, hearing all of these concerns and issues with safety and public safety, I would think that maybe we, the city itself would want to look at putting security camera stuff in a specific pool related to public safety as opposed to all of these intermittent kind of, the rec center has to worry about it. IT has some concerns or some responsibility. I guess it's just a comment that came to mind while we were talking about this, that an overall public safety plan would feel safe, would feel better to me so we could make a better decision.
Carl?
How are you?
And somebody dog in the background, can you mute yourself, please? Unless it's Carl, who was about to speak.
That's me.
Oh, okay. Never mind. Sorry about that.
The the security cameras, I, I'm in favor of doing that. If you have a camera that has no image, it really doesn't do any good whatsoever. And we've got, I think that's what worth going for. And the feasibility study, that's not actually putting the door in, but it's I, it's going to be years and years before the city center is gone, if it does go. And I think the security of the the library is is an issue. It's been an issue for a long time and if they can put a single door in there and use the existing doors for emergency exits, I think that would be a good idea. That would be for the feasibility study also.
Is that all of the folks?
What what is the, so we have seven hundred thousand to go? Is that correct?
Yes. Okay. And so do we want to go, let's go back to the director. If she's got more answers to our questions and then let's start going the line, down the line and figuring out the budget.
Yeah, I think maybe just a prime Director Deandre, there was a question between there's a road and bridge fund, a bridge repair, a street reconstruction, and I guess those are the three tier ones and one tier two. Is there a difference between all of those? Is there, was there money set aside last year? Did we use all that last year? Are there variations for that? It seems a little bit like a kind of a overall pot and how is that used?
Sure. Yep, thank you. Yes, those are three separate funds and and sort of ongoing, if you will. So we used to and have had for a very long time, the road and bridge account. And that was kind of a wrote, used for road and bridge and also for street staff to utilize for materials such as for pothole patching, that sort of thing. So since over the, I think we started it in the twenty twenty-two budget, that now, I believe the amount is three hundred thousand. And so that is just for the road materials used by the street staff. And we've taken the annual amounts and put them in pavement maintenance, which I believe is another line item. And that's what we're using solely for our pavement management program. The bridge repair then is an annual appropriation as well to do bridge repairs. So that's now a standalone as well solely for bridges. And then the final one that you mentioned, forget, no.
I believe it was street reconstruction.
Right. Street reconstruction, yes. So the pavement maintenance is intended to do just that, just maintenance. So street reconstruction is where we would actually go down, remove all of the pavement and do more substantial repairs. So that's beyond the pavement management program. So at some point, our roads will wear out where we've got to start doing actual reconstruction. This also might be precipitated if there's a lot of utility work to do, for example, water and sanitary sewer main replacement. And then that would dictate a full reconstruction, which is not And then that would dictate a full reconstruction, which is not currently funded in that pavement management account.
Colin?
And so I guess I would assume, though, if we were doing a full reconstruction, that would almost be its own identified project. Uh, something like Old Hampton Complete Streets or something along those lines, or would you be able to, or would you typically do projects out of that full street reconstruction?
No, you're right. I think we need to start identifying that. So we did, last year, we did a um full analysis of all of the street segments, the the condition, a quantitative number from zero to one hundred. So we're probably looking at any of those streets below twenty-five to thirty would probably be eligible for that street reconstruction. So I think we need to put a map together that shows that and probably put some closer or more accurate dollar amounts to that and what we would do each year.
Thank you.
There?
So we're not there yet.
Here, Austin?
Um, thank you. That's that's helpful. But I'm trying to understand um, why is pavement maintenance uh, being considered for the capital accounts? Um, it seems to me that that would be more on the expense line rather than in capital.
Um, yeah, somebody from finance would need to answer that better. I think because of the, maybe because of the dollar amount that it's so, it's so significant that we're, you know, investing in our um, whether it's buildings or roads or whatever, that it's a significant enough dollar that it's got to be from the capital fund. I think that's, I think that's the case.
Well, let me assume that we're going to have this question as we go through these by line by line. Currently, we have pavement maintenance by area asked for three million right at this point, where at half of that, one point five million, and then reconstruction asked for I'm sorry, so the five hundred thousand and we gave you zero. So can you speak to which one we should prioritize and what sort of weight we might give to each one of those categories?
Yeah, I think the the robe, the most robust program that we have in place right now is the is the pavement maintenance. So I would, I would uh, recommend that that's the highest and the main priority. We, we're on that five-year cycle, which I think I've shared in the past. If not, I can certainly come back and do that. But we're on a five-year cycle around the entire city to do pavement maintenance. And so um, we've been doing that now since twenty nineteen. So we're almost through that first uh, five-year cycle. Uh, but as I just mentioned uh, in to member Hagerty, I think we still may have a ways to go and in more fully building out that uh, street reconstruction. So I'd say that's probably a lower priority at this time. And then the bridge maintenance, we do get a um, a report from C-Dot. So they go through and inspect the, all of the bridges every other year. So they do help us to prioritize what the bridge maintenance is. And there are some uh, relatively, you know, I would say less expensive things that we'd like to tackle every year to try and stay up with those. So I would say that's probably the second priority.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
Colin?
Yeah, that is very helpful. And I guess one of the items that came up was, like I said, the old Hampden. And there is a grant funding. Is there any update on that? Do we feel like, that's, you know, one point two million where you know, we're not sure if that's our matching part, or if that was what we're hoping to get out of the funding?
Sure. Yeah, so um, the intent is that we're currently developing plans to replace the water main, the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer in that section of Old Hampton. And that's funded by the three uh, utilities, as well as some of the ARPA funds that we've uh, the city has appropriated towards that project. The what we'll be applying for here towards the end of June, and we're working on the applications right now is to go for basically what we say, the top side improvements or anything from the pavement up. And we're looking at doing a complete streets where we'd have um, more bike and ped facilities, remove the on-street parking, most likely add pedestrian lighting and benches and landscaping. And so that's the grant that we would be applying for through Dr. Cog. So that's due at, I believe, June twenty-fourth, right? And so the one point two would be our match for that. So it's uh, since we haven't submitted the application, we still don't know how many other applications are out there. We would be competing against Arapahoe County project from other entities within Arapahoe County. And right now, we don't have a firm estimate, but we're probably in the range of anywhere from ten to twelve million for that project. So we're anticipating that's about a ten percent match for those.
And would that have to be matched all this year? Could that be split up over time?
I think it could be split up. I think they would want us to commit to that, you know, so if we will, we will find out later this, probably in the fall, if we get that. And so then they'd be looking for us to enter into an IGA and at least commit the dollars. But I think, you know, we wouldn't actually expend them all in um, uh, that would be then would be in twenty twenty-three, so it probably would spill over into twenty twenty-four.
Okay, commissioners, there's a couple of ways to look at this. Um, we obviously need to go through line by line. Um, do we want to just go through and see, and just to say yea or nay, we're we're comfortable with our original recommended number and go up or down, or are there things that we didn't do that we want to put some money towards? Um, I'm open to how you want to handle this.
I think that sounds good. Michelle, will you start running through?
Okay. All right, so um, wayfinding and
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so um, just because it's, everybody's muting and unmuting. Um, let me just, I'll just go through the the those top five recommendations, and then you can raise your hand if you have a a question or issue, want to have one of them, one of them go up or down. So uh, seventy thousand for wayfinding and placemaking, alley maintenance, one fifty, pavement maintenance by area, one point five mil, Dartmouth Reconstruct, West of Santa Fe for seven hundred fifty thousand. Do anyone, does anybody want to make adjustments to any of those? Knowing that we have about seven hundred thousand to spend.
Brenda?
Yeah, I, when I think about wayfinding and placemaking, I mean, I love the idea. But there's signage is just so low on the priority. I I would even be willing to just knock some off that. Maybe thirty, we could just give them thirty thousand.
Judy?
I apologize because I wasn't a part of the original discussion on this, but previously, last year, a lot of our discussion about wayfinding and placemaking, again, was about um citizen safety, so that it was clear where bike paths go, start and stop. And so it wasn't, it wasn't just about marketing or, you know, hey, this is Englewood. It was about making sure people knew. Uh, we talked a lot about the signage and wayfinding on our bike paths. And um, people understanding, you know, from a safety standpoint, how to get from one place to another, where to, where to cross the street. So at one point, our discussion about that, at least last year, was around um, people's safety as they're walking through the city, not about specifically a marketing kind of thing. So I don't know what you, how you guys all came up with seventy, but I, I don't know that, depending on what it's going to be used for, if it's a citizen safety thing, I think we should keep it where it is, but that's just an opinion. Because I don't know how you got to seventy, so I apologize. I wasn't here.
No, no, see, what I saw was a presentation by the Downtown Authority where they polled citizens for wayfinding and placemaking to put signage like Welcome to Englewood um, on the new federal bridge over Oxford and at the entrance to Long Hampton. And they had several different kinds of fonts and styles. So that's what I thought this was for. For, yeah, a marketing thing.
Their own stuff. The the DDA is supposed to be funding their own things.
Well, if that's true, well, that's okay. But I wasn't aware anybody was getting lost on our bike trails. Um, I'm sorry, I would, I would say that there's, that the infrastructure is very, very important. And that if we should just keep going down, and if we find something that we think is more important, oh, thank you for finding it. Yeah, um, infrastructure signage. So that's doesn't look like a bike trail.
Thank you, Nancy.
I was just commenting on the discussion we had last year, so.
Yeah, I think it's
It's not about a specific like.
Okay. Fair enough. So let's just sort of say, you know, the seventy thousand, it's maybe, can we get a consensus that it's at least at this point seems reasonable, but we can maybe add to it later if we feel strongly or not? Right?
Or lower it.
Or lower it.
Let's keep going.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, Chair. Carl has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Uh, not not really a question. I I think the seventy thousand is fine for me. I'm uncomfortable with it, so. Anything more than that I'd question, but uh, I'm fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so I think we're down to Broadway Corridor Study. They asked for fifty, we put in for fifty. Then we did not give anything to transpre- transportation system upgrade, asked seventy-five. Concrete utility city share, three fifty, asked, we gave nothing. Walking wheel implementation, two hundred and fifty. And uh, we so far have said yes to two hundred and fifty. If you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and down till I have another space, um, so I can crack at things. Signal equipment upgrade replacement, they asked one fifty, we put in one fifty. Um, concrete program accessible ramps, they asked for three fifty, we put in three fifty.
It's Colin has his hand up.
Yeah, just as a note, we did put three twenty-five to the concrete utility city share. I think that might have been another one that if we could get a little more information from Director DeAndre on on what that is, is that a similar repair maintenance um, effort?
Is she still online with us?
She is. Yeah, for, I'm sorry, for which project?
The concrete utility city share.
Yeah, so that's our annual sidewalk maintenance program. So on the corners for ped ramps and then along the side streets, like a a corner lot, um, we, the city contributes to that, so that the the corner lots are not overly burdened with that um, concrete utility charges.
So that's not
In addition to the ramps. Sorry, go ahead. Sure.
No, I was just gonna say, so that's different from the concrete utility that we pay on our bills on a monthly basis, basis, right?
Yeah, so homeowners pay into that. And so we use that to do the, let's say, the frontage of people's sidewalks. But when there's a corner lot and or for ped ramps, so we have over the last several years, had a separate line account for ped ramps as well. But we have done some of the corners. Um, it could, we don't basically charge that against the concrete utility or that homeowner who are on the corners, nor for the side street.
I I I interrupted you. Sorry, Colin.
So Colin, for my clarification, you're talking about the concrete utility city share for three hundred twenty-five thousand? And then going down for concrete program accessible ramps to three fifty?
Yeah, I was asking if those were were separate, but it does sound like they are. I was just saying, last year, we put in three twenty-five for the utility city share, just as a a note. And it does sound like that's something that that is utilized. I I I guess, is there any note on how well we utilize all these funds? Do we have leftover out of any of them? Do they just get used in other places? If that's the case?
No, um, so that is delegated directly to that program. So if we don't use them, they basically go back into the pot for distribution next year. Um, in the general fund, the way that we're doing this process. But we have been trying to be more aggressive with our pedestrian ramp program. And so we have been utilizing those full funds over the last several years.
Okay, so it looks to me like if I can sort of summarize, um, we've added now three twenty-five for the concrete utility city share on Colin's suggestion, which means we've spent close to half of what our max is. Is that correct?
Yeah, I do feel like if it, one of the things, if we have the ability to push Old Hampton, maybe we can put a million instead of one point two in there, if we can push some of that funding to the next year, or even maybe nine hundred and three hundred kind of situations that might let us um, get into some of these other ones. But I think we can run through those as we get further down.
Okay, so is there an objection to us putting in that three twenty-five? Or the concrete utility city share for now, knowing that we might come back to it and modify it?
Good.
Okay. All right, so I think I am at Santa Fe bike pedestrian improvements for two, oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Thank, thank you, Nancy. Um, the Union Bridge Rehabilitation for four hundred thousand, we so far have given them nothing. Santa Fe Bike Pa- Ped Improvements, two fifty, we so far have said yes to fifty. We did not give anything to ERC upgrades, asked two hundred, gave nothing. Parks and Rec Parking Lot Maintenance, thank you so much, Nancy. You're so helpful. Sixty thousand, we gave them nothing. Bridge repairs, they asked three hundred, we gave them nothing. Street reconstruction, they asked for five hundred, we gave them nothing. That's a lot to, even though there's, we said basically nothing to most of those. Um, any changes to those recommendations?
Excuse me, Chair Austin, if I could, if I could interrupt, I'm sorry.
Of course, go ahead. Of course, go ahead.
I I apologize. The the two hundred and fifty for the Santa Fe um uh, pet improvement, so that was going to be the City of Englewood's match, along with the Cities of Littleton, Sheridan, and then Arapahoe County to do some about five or six projects along the corridor. We did not get funding for that. We had already applied for for uh, regional funding. So I think for now, I would put that as on the back burner unless future funding opportunities come up.
Add two hundred and fifty thousand. Perfect. Okay. So is there objection to zeroing that out? Seeing none. I think there's hands raised, Nancy.
Yep. Uh, Judy?
I just had a question on the Union Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation. Um, so previously, we talked about um C-Dot coming through and saying what bridges needed to be repaired. It, um, is that, was that a recommendation of C-Dot? And is that a would that no longer, if it doesn't happen, would we have an issue with people being able to get across there? Because it's pretty heavily used.
Yeah, that, yes, uh, it was, it came out of those um, inspection reports done through C-Dot. And the four hundred thousand is just for the design. And then what we, the next year, I believe, it shows that we'd have more money to actually do the uh, more significant upgrades or repairs.
Okay, I think that has to happen. I don't know how we don't give that money.
I would, I would support that also. And you have one point eight identified, and I feel like that's probably going to be a little low for um, twenty-four, but I think I would agree with Judy. I think we need to fund that one. Um, uh, same with Director Underhill, was said that they had the, needed the two hundred K for the facility updated ERC upgrades, I'm sorry. Um, I think we Um, I think we should support that because they're ready to go and they're just, need that last funding to get that taken care of. Um, and then the parks and rec lot, she said that can be zeroed because, that came in at ninety or a hundred thousand, so we can zero that one out because they're not doing it next year. Um. And then I guess, yeah, I, I'd say, I don't know if it really matters, um, Director DeAndre, you know, would it be good to split or put a hundred thousand in road and bridge and the, in line eleven and then a hundred thousand in bridge repairs, or would it be better to have all in one? I think you said bridge repairs maybe would be second, would you rather have three hundred in there? And if that's the case, I think, I'd say maybe we just fund one of them and put three hundred in, in one of them and, and go from there.
Yeah, yeah, if it, if it's that choice, you know, I, I think our next focus, if uh, we have to cut something, it'd probably be bridge repairs. Because we need to focus on the Union Avenue Bridge. So instead of maybe allocating to both bridge repair and uh, um, Union Avenue, maybe putting some towards Union Avenue, for that redesign, and then the rest would, we need at least about a hundred and fifty in road and bridge for the materials cost.
Okay, thank you Nancy for keeping this all straight. And thank you for putting these numbers in, so now with the changes that Colin suggested, are they all in there, can we look at a total down here?
You're over by a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and that's not counting for the art and public spaces.
Did you reduce the Old Hampton, or is that still at one point two?
What did you want to reduce it to, I'm sorry?
I was thinking nine, it sounded like we could do this over two years, so maybe we could put nine hundred in, in this time in, and then have a little more slush fun to play with.
That's not a word we wanna talk about.
Colin, you had your hand up, and then Carl.
I'm done talking, thank you.
Oh, okay, Carl?
Uh, for additional funds, the uh, the Union Bridge uh, a lot of the traffic on that, the, the damaging traffic is uh, from the trash trucks from Waste Management. Have we tried to get uh, anything from Waste Management on uh, the Union Avenue Bridge?
So they do, um. They, they provide a, it's called a waste transfer surcharge. So it's fifty cents per every cubic yard of materials that are deposited at the Oxford Transfer Station, come back to the city. Um, and so the, those monies just go into the general fund. So they do, other cities who have this, the intent is that that would go, I believe, towards road repairs, although when I read the ordinance, or yeah, uh, excuse me, the municipal code, it doesn't say what the purpose is. So we get about roughly seven to eight hundred thousand dollars per year through the Oxford Transfer Station, but it just goes into the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
That was a good point Carl, maybe it'd be good to direct that to the bridge and other kind of fund replacements for repairs.
So what do we have, well, first of all, let me ask, are the, changes that we've made so far agreeable to the commissioners? If, if you disagree, raise your hand please, let's do it that way, I mean, your computer hand. Okay. Um, okay, so Nancy, are, what is the total and what do we have left to look at? Maximum funding available is eight million, so we are at one seventy-five left to go.
Correct, Colin?
I, I did see one in there that I think is gonna be, I, we're gonna have to start playing around with the facilities and operations. Um, I, line, yeah, fifty-three. Um, I have a feeling that's one that we probably can't, um, skip or anything, I, I hadn't noticed that before. Is that, maybe we could get a little more clarification on, on what that is?
Well, and why is it a proposed capital expense too? Can you?
Yeah, so similar, um, we've created a five-year maintenance plan for all of our buildings. So this would be something like, things like, um, oh, what's in there, you know, replacing windows at different buildings, um, upgrading the HVAC system, major kind of repair issues, not just, you know, fixing, let's say, door knobs or something like that, but more of those major uh, efforts. And so again, I think that's why it's coming out of the capital. Um, but also then it, it, so that dollar amount, you know, varies a little bit, but we do have laid out a five-year plan. And the investment in the Civic Center is pretty minimal at this point, um, pending, you know, what happens with uh, if any potential redevelopment.
But some of those things you mentioned, like uh, you know, replacing HVAC systems and things like that, those are depreciable assets, assets, so they're not, really capital.
Yeah, again, that might be a question, a follow-up question with finances, how they do that, they've always um, put that in the capital projects fund.
Okay.
As opposed to their operating budget.
I guess, is that something you feel, I mean, it looks like you've got about one point three million in the next couple of years, identified for that five-year plan, and then a million, million after that. Um, so obviously, there's five million dollars worth of things in there, I don't know that we can cut that out completely, but maybe do we, I don't know, we put, you know, four hundred or something in there, and then we're over by two hundred someplace else that we need to, pull it out of, and maybe is that, is the service center, I feel like we, we talked about that one last time, that we have to fund that whole thing, right now, or maybe not have to, isn't the right term, is there maybe some money we could pull off of that?
Well, right now, we have one seventy-five to spend, and you just put in four hundred, so we've gotta go back and cut something.
The Chair, I believe you left off at street reconstruction.
True.
So I'm sorry Director DeAndre.
Oh, I'm sorry, um. The uh, yeah, if, I, I, you know, if we wanted to scale back on the facilities, maintenance, line item, those, those other prod, whatever we, you know, if we ended up with a certain dollar amount, we just have to work within that. And then some of those efforts would just have to push out into future years.
Okay. Scroll up just a tad there, Nancy. So we, okay, we left off at, where did we leave off, at the Broadway, no, street reconstruction, okay. Okay, so we'll just leave things how they are, knowing that we're gonna have to go back perhaps and cut. So uh, our ERC upgrades, two hundred thousand, we asked for, we gave them that. Uh, Parks and Rec parking lot maintenance, they asked sixty, we gave them nothing, not proceeding with the works, that's okay. Bridge repairs, they asked three hundred, we gave them nothing. Street reconstruction, they asked for five hundred, we gave them nothing. Public art acquisi- acquisition, um, two fifty, uh, asked for, we gave them fifty. And Old Hampton, they asked for one point two, we gave them nine hundred. Comments on any of those? Okay. So um, sidewalk gap construction, oh, there we go. They asked for three hundred, we gave them three hundred, street lights and furniture repair replacement, they asked for thirty, we gave them nothing. Implementation of, something, street calming, they asked for sixty, we gave them nothing. Arterial collector, street pavement maintenance, they asked for a million, we give nothing. Let's just stop there before we get back into numbers.
Colin?
Looking at sidewalk gap, as much as I think that's one of the most important things that we can do, maybe we can cut that by seventy-five K, make that two twenty-five, and, maybe we can find some more money later on, um, and, again, for the arterial and collector street, may, I think because we have the other pots that we're putting money into, that's why I feel comfortable, not funding it there, just based on the, the conversations with Director DeAndre.
Any objection to the recent changes to the spreadsheet? Okay, keep moving forward here, so I think we're on network development. Asked for two fifty, we gave them two fifty. PC replacements, ninety, asked for ninety, we gave, um, fiber network, a million, asked for, we gave them five hundred, I think we did a, good discussion on that, but we'll, we'll see if you know, wanting wants to move things up or down based on that discussion. Facilities and operations, six-six-four, we gave them four hundred. ADA compliance, they asked for a hundred, we gave them fifty. And service center, facility construction, one point two-five, we gave one point two-five. Comments on those items? Raise your hand. Okay?
Uh, well, but just because I can't stop. The service center, we've got fifteen million dollars identified next year. Um, Director DeAndre or, or others, is the one point two-five also a design cost, is that what's going on with that, I feel like we talked about that one last week, maybe a quick reminder?
Yes, it is the design cost, um, anticipating construction starting late twenty twenty-three or early twenty twenty-four.
Is there, is, are we under contract on that already, or is that something that's coming out?
We are not under contract, uh, we're still in the space planning phase, basically. So that dollar amount is, is just a very rough estimate at this point.
I mean, maybe we can put one point one there for right now and, and, hope to have some more money, now, I don't see us having fifteen million dollars next year. Um. To totally fund the whole thing anyway, so maybe that's kind of where we could start, and at least start putting money away for it. I guess it does sound like it's something that's gonna be needed to co-locate everybody.
Carl? Carl?
Unmute please.
Uh, uh, the ADA compliant projects, I, I kind of feel that uh, depending on what that actually is, I, I'd like to do the whole hundred thousand on that, but I'm, uh, that, that's, we're on the ADA concrete work, though, we're years and years behind on that. We don't wanna get too far behind on the ADA compliance. It's, it's not uh, it's not something you want to uh, uh, avoid or delay.
Carl, there's some problems with the background noise, but um, we are right now, right at eight million, so if we add that extra fifty, is there a spot that you would think that we can cut by fifty to balance out?
I think Director DeAndre was trying to say something as well.
Yeah, I think she had so much background noise that she couldn't talk, I'm not sure. But yeah, let's listen to her.
I, I just wanted to say that the ADA compliance projects are not intended for the ped ramps. This would be things we're, we're completing this year, an ADA audit, so this might be things like handrails. Um, different things, pushbars on doors, things like that, where there, we have non-compliance, to allow for ADA access, or the guidelines have changed, and so we need to do more like facility upgrades as opposed to out at the ped ramps.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Uh, Colin?
Um, I think the network development was one we fully funded, kind of the risk of falling behind on that. It looks like there is, it looks like continuous funding two fifty this year, one fifty next year. Is that something um, maybe that um, we could discuss on whether maybe two hundred Jeremy would be helpful this year, and do we push a little bit of that off in order to, have a little bit more money to play with, I guess, your thoughts would be great.
Yeah, I mean, in, in our, in our server room, right now, this is for our, 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 our server upgrades that we're gonna be performing next year. Cause in January of um, twenty twenty-three, they're at end of life, so they don't support them anymore. Um. I believe we possibly could get away, if you wanted to cut it fifty, I believe we could cut, we can get away with uh, getting around some things on that, if you wanted to do that.
I guess maybe Carl, how do you feel, is that, do you really wanna push the other ADA stuff, or should we get the network? That fully funded, because there's always more money that can be put in, but.
Uh, the ADA, if it's uh, handrails and whatnot, uh, we could maybe push that off for a little while.
Okay.
I mean, I'm going to, compliance right now on our websites. And a lot of the big concerns is the legal ramifications, people sue happy, so.
And Nancy, I think that was uh, line fifty should be two hundred and fifty, not twenty-five.
That's probably correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's not gonna buy me all.
Yeah, I think Jeremy's gonna be okay with that, though.
But, I mean, I, I would, if we talk about ADA compliance, you know, something to think about, you know, people do come around if something's wrong. You know, there, there's a, there's a risk there.
Uh, I think we ought to have the ADA at least fifty thousand. Cause they, they could cost a lawsuit of a couple million, maybe.
There's also, if I'm in a wheelchair, I wanna go to one of the bathrooms and camp because I'm missing a, a handrail or, or something like that, does.
No.
I mean, we're, we're talking fifty thousand dollars, feel like there's a, a big payoff there.
And maybe network development maybe goes to two twenty, I, I would like to see the security Civic Center and Rec Center, the twenty thousand put in there, so maybe if we're at, two twenty on network development, then we can put another twenty thousand in to line sixty-one.
Colin, I think you might be a, a mind reader, because I was thinking the exact same thing about the security, at the Civic Center and Rec Center, but, so far tonight, at least in my recollection, uh, we've been taking a lot of money from the IT budget for Jeremy, and that if we have, you know, ten or twenty thousand left to allocate, I'd like to ask him uh, what his preference might be, if that's acceptable to the commission.
I guess the only thing I just remembered, we do have the art, um, that we'll have to.
Ah, correct.
Put in also, but besides that. Is that one percent of Fund Thirty-One, so is that one percent of just the ones in line D or column D?
It is one percent of those uh, that you choose to fund. Yes, out of column D.
So can you maybe just select all those and just see where we would be at real quick, so we know how much money Jeremy has to play with if he does?
Okay, if, if we tell him he can, right?
Yeah. I think if you just highlight um, this cells, it should total up on the lower right-hand corner. Um, starting at line fifty.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, you're good.
At line fifty, you said here.
Yep. So two, so twenty, that's already twenty-four K, right, is? Or is it?
No, because we've got one point one million in here.
I mean, two point four seven, one percent of two point four seven million would be.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah, twenty-four seven hundred, so we're over.
If we designate one of these items as where the art money will come out of, for, that way, we don't have to worry about calculating it each time as we go through. Um. If that makes sense.
You wanna put some cool circular references into that?
I was gonna recommend it, but I like to keep Excel out of my private life.
You and me both, Noel.
I, I do think that we're basically 15K-ish over, though, right now with art in public places.
So do we go back to the security cameras at the Civic Center and Rec Center, which I think was our latest addition, or is there something else to look at?
I'm sorry, Carl.
The public art, is that, uh, is that MOA art, or is that the city-owned art?
I think last time you said it, city-owned art.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Uh, Colin?
I think I, I would lean towards, um, maybe 210 for, um, Jeremy on the network developments. And then.
No, two, another zero.
Yep, sorry, thank you. And then if we need to take, I think, per Noel's, um, suggestion, if we need more money, take it out of the Service Center, Survey Center. Uh, if there's another 5,000, so maybe that's 1095. And then I think that we're probably, that's the, the 25K we need, but that might have gone down again, because of the 1% of it is a lower number now.
Yeah, we need to put that number in to get the total.
What budget is the art in public places from? Because to Colin's point, are we really just creating a circular for a million here, where every time we calculate it, it goes up?
Well, Nancy, we're gonna, I mean, we've got things over in column G now, too, so.
And that's just a side summary to figure out what that number
Right.
is, and I guess.
Does that be 24?
Yeah, so that would basically be right where.
4,000.
We'd be at 7,999, sold.
If that's part of the budget, then adding it also increases the amount of the total, which that increases the 1%.
Right.
$350 I'm, I'm looking at, right.
And I think these numbers, just if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Nancy, th- this goes to council, and then they have the ultimate decision on whether they like any of these numbers, and can change freely. They will take our recommendation and then per, present a final budget and vote on a final budget.
That's my understanding, but one of the directors could probably answer that better than I can.
That's my understanding, too, Nancy. Well. Let's, since I don't hear any directors speaking up right now, um, are, is, is everybody comfortable with this? Are we okay to try and move forward with a vote for this recommendation to City Council? Raise your hand if you have comments or issues, please.
Noel? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Ca- Carl first, and then Noel.
Noel might have beat me, but I, can we round it off to 8 million? That's kind of like, that, uh, odd number is, they're gonna say, what is that? Why are you doing that?
Uh, we obviously, yeah, it's just a matter of where we put that itty-bitty bit of money, so, um, but the, the reality is that City Council's gonna change this, so I'm not sure. It's a big deal, but it is sort of weird, I agree.
And Noel?
Um, were there any details on the street calming line? I rea- I wasn't sure if we had talked about that one. Oh, it's a tier two, okay, nevermind.
Other comments or questions, or? Are we ready to vote?
I've got one quick thing that, uh, I totally want to find. If you look on your agendas on page, start on page 145, it does show what's been expended and what was budgeted last year, if there's any last-minute reviews of, of things. That was one of the questions that we had, and so they provided that information, I just didn't realize it until I was re-looking back, there's some things, so. I'm, I'm good moving forward, I just want everyone to see that information if they wanted to.
Thank you. Carl, do you still have questions, comments?
Uh, we, we have a lot of tier two in there. Is that, uh, you gonna raise a flag, or, or is that okay?
That is a staff question.
I would say that's fine, you know, I, I think this is, you've had a good discussion, and, um, this is the recommendations that you're putting forward, and it is ultimately council's decision as to whether they, you know, modify these or not, but I think you've, you've done your due diligence in terms of discussing this and what you think the priorities are at this time.
Thank you. Okay. Um, without seeing any, um, opposition, do I have a motion to approve forwarding this, um, capital, capital spending plan to City Council for their approval?
I will move to submit this CIP plan to council.
Thank you. Second?
I will second it.
Thank you. Discussion, raise your hand, please. Am I seeing none, Nancy?
You are. Are you ready to vote?
Okay, yes, please call for the vote, please.
Colin?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fantastic, that's fantastic. This is one of our major responsibilities, so it's always nice to have, um, such a good discussion and, uh, everybody coming together and, uh, putting forward the best work we can. The next item on the agenda is staff's choice.
This is Brian, and I, I have nothing today.
Brad, John?
Good evening, everybody, it's Brad. Uh, I don't have anything other than to express my appreciation to my colleagues, Jeremy, Christina, and Maria for their time this evening. Thank you all.
Agree with that 100%. John, anything?
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay. Uh, Jeremy, or Christina, or Brian?
Nothing for me, but thank you very much for thinking through each of these projects and having a great discussion, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Nothing for me, thank you for having me and having this great discussion. Appreciate your, all your work on this.
You're welcome. Uh, Brian, anything further?
No, I do want to echo what Brad said. Thank you to the directors that came in and spoke to everybody. Um, and thank you guys for all your hard work on this.
And I don't even know what the score is of the AVS game. Nancy, do you have anything?
I do not, but thank you for asking.
Okay, attorney's choice?
Vicky was unable to attend this evening.
Okay. Commissioner's choice, Carl?
Uh, I just wanted to thank the directors for taking their time out to make our job easier. But, uh, that helps a great deal to have more information when you don't know what's going on.
I think we can all agree. I'm sorry, Carl, I interrupted you. Did you have anything further to say?
I, I, I do not know what the AVS score is either, so. I will in a few minutes.
That's okay, don't, don't tell me, I'm taping it, I'll, I'll find out in a little bit, too. Brenda?
I'm good, just thank you all to the directors also for attending, thanks.
Judy? Thank you. Kate?
Um, nothing new to add, thanks, everyone.
You're welcome. Colin?
Uh, echo everyone, and also Nancy, thank you for having that spreadsheet, because that makes it a heck of a lot easier to go through, so appreciate that.
Noel?
Uh, nothing further this evening.
Well, I'd just like to echo, um, thank you all for, uh, the directors and for all of you attending. And Nancy, thank you so much for really helping us through maneuvering through that spreadsheet. I know that, uh, it's, you're trying to do two, two things at once, listen and also manipulate a spreadsheet. So that's sometimes, uh, a little bit difficult, at least for me, but you did a great job, and thank you all so much. Okay, I think that we should adjourn this meeting. Thank you so much for all your good work.
Thank you, everyone.